It records.
Say it again. Okay. Yeah, it just not coming up right. Okay, so please, we will come out of recess at 6:10. My apologies for that. And officially on the recording, my apologies to those attempting to listen in live. And we'll get this resolved tomorrow. Okay, so we've done call the order. Mayor Putin Madre, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, law and the indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, tonight we have two special presentations. First, Ms. Sally Baco with the Gulf Coast Protection District is here to discuss the Coastal Texas Storm Surge Protection Project specifically with Dimonan Beach Nurishment.
Thank you so much. I'm very grateful for this opportunity to come and talk to you. I did bring some materials for you. While I don't have enough for everyone in the room, I can follow up with electronic copies so that if you wish to post it on your website for your citizens, you can do so. Yes, I'm Sally Baco. I am a board director with the Gulf Coast Protection District. And in 2021, the Texas Legislature created the Gulf Coast Protection District for the purpose of acting as a non-federal sponsor for certain U.S. Army Corps of Engineers projects. These include the Coastal Texas Project, what you have become familiar with as the Ike Dyke Project, as well as certain Sabine de Galveston Bay Projects authorized by Congress. That includes Orange County and Jefferson County. The Coastal Texas Project was authorized by Congress in 2022. Now, what do I mean by authorized versus funded? When the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers completes a feasibility study on a concept, they go through that process and the chief of engineers signs off on a report that includes recommendations to Congress. Congress takes that report, evaluates those recommendations, sifts them around, and comes up with legislation called the Water Resources Development Act. That is typically authorization legislation that Congress passes roughly every two years where they will authorize new studies, new projects, and assorted other changes that they may wish to make with existing projects. Authorization is simply Congress looking at that chief's report and saying, "Sounds good? Okay, let's do it." It's not money. And that is a critical point for people to understand in this process. The Coastal Texas Project is authorized but not yet funded. So when we're looking at an authorized project like the Coastal Texas Project, let's think about rules and responsibilities. The Coastal Texas Project includes the Galveston Bay Storm Barrier System. That's the system that you're most familiar with, the Bolliver Roads Gate System, the Double Dune and Expanded Beach System, the seawall improvements along the Galveston Seawall, Clearlight and Dickinson Bakers Gate Systems, and some non-structural measures with regards to home elevations and floodproofing and things of that nature. So that is the storm surge barrier system that includes your beach and dune system. The Gulf Coast Protection District is the non-federal sponsor for that project. We also have, as authorized in that larger Coastal Texas Project, the coastwide ecosystem restoration projects. The General Land Office is the non-federal sponsor for that project. In addition, we have beach nourishment for South Padre Island, which is included in that larger Coastal Texas Project that was authorized by Congress, and the General Land Office acts as non-federal sponsor for that. So when Congress authorized this project, including the coastal barrier storm surge system, including the ecosystem, and including the South Padre Nourishment, that project was authorized for $34.4 billion. Okay? Now, when Congress authorizes a project, they're looking in terms of current dollars. What is it going to cost today to complete this project? As the Corps moves forward with projects, they think in terms of, all right, every two years, we need to up that estimate to make it more current with the dollar at that point in time. So taking into account inflation, taking into account aspects of the project that are completed, things of that nature. So that figure will change over time because there are aspects of this project on a 20-year construction timeframe. So those are important points to keep in mind when thinking about this project. When you look at your packet, you'll see an information sheet that's on the Gulf Coast Protection District. It describes to you our 11-member board. Six of those board members are appointed by the governor, and five members are appointed by the five counties that are within our jurisdiction. That's Jefferson County, Chambers County, Orange County, Harris County, and Galveston County. On the backside, it gives you a little information on the timeline and funding that's occurred. By and large, the only funding that has occurred to date has been for the Sabine de Galveston, Orange County, and Jefferson County Projects, both from Congress and from the Texas Legislature in terms of providing the non-federal share to match what Congress appropriated for those projects. However, this last session, we were very fortunate that the Texas Legislature, after hearing the information we gave to them regarding the storm surge suppression system, protection system, and its benefits from a supply chain perspective, protecting jobs, protecting disadvantaged communities, utilizing nature-based solutions, they began to understand, particularly from the supply chain perspective and the larger gate system, what this project means to the state. The basic chemicals produced in this region used by manufacturers throughout the state, the commodities that come through our ports utilized throughout this state, there's not a manufacturer or business that isn't impacted by what happens on the upper Texas coast. So in this last legislative session, the Texas Legislature appropriated $200 million in advance for the purposes of meeting initial non-federal share obligations towards the Coastal Texas Project. So where does that place us now? We are actively working with Congress, advocating with Congress and the administration for funding to get started. And what the Gulf Coast Protection District has looked at is how can we break this project up into what we call embraceable buckets? You know, this is a $32 billion project. We only have a certain portion of that $32 billion project, given our jurisdiction and our role as non-federal sponsor for the coastal storm surge protection system. So we looked at that. The main economic engine for this larger project is that gate system and protecting the Houston Ship Channel and protecting those supply chains. So working to advance that on the long term is an absolute number-one priority for our region and for our state, and quite frankly, for the rest of the nation. But meanwhile, we have to demonstrate to Congress and to the legislature accomplishments. We can't spend 20 years and say, "Oh, look, look what we did." We have shorter-term projects that are within our grasp that we can demonstrate both surge protection as well as economic protection. Our beach and dune systems is a great example of that. Our double-dune, expanded beach and dune system going from the end of the seawall west down Galveston Island to San Luis Pass provides both surge protection but also economic protection. One of the top 10 tourist sites in the state are our beaches. Okay? They promote our tourism. Our tourism provides one in three jobs for this island. And as a result, it serves a dual purpose and meets many of the priorities that the current administration has with regards to job protection, to nature-based solutions, to protecting disadvantaged communities. So as a result, we have been working to advance this first bucket. And what I mean by that is we're asking for $269 million from the Office of Management and Budget, which is the president's budget office, because when Congress passed the bipartisan infrastructure bill or Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act, they allocated certain funds to the Corps for backlog projects and other activities. They have unallocated funds available. So that would be the quickest way for us to access federal funds. And so we've put together this bucket to demonstrate both movement on a long-term basis and accomplishment on a shorter-term basis. What you also have in your packet is a brochure that goes into greater detail on the different aspects of the project, the gate system, the beach and dune system, and ecosystem restoration pieces, as well as the cost estimate that I described to you. And I know that I'm under a time limit and you have other business, but I did want to try and be as thorough as possible in helping you understand where we're at and where we're trying to go. The bucket, the $269 million, that will go towards that first bucket of activity. With regards to the beach and dune system, we will, assuming we get this money, and we will need to do a second environmental assessment as well as sand sourcing. I will say that the Gulf Coast Protection District Board met yesterday, and we approved an interlocal agreement with the Texas General Land Office on a sediment study that will help us identify additional sources for building those dunes and expanding those beaches along West Galveston Island. So I guess what I will, oh, and the last piece in your packet describes the economic protections with regards to the larger storm surge protection system that we have shared with our Texas Legislature and with our congressional delegation. And I am happy to answer whatever questions, as long as they're not IT.
I have one question, and, well, and thank you for coming and explaining all of this. I know you have a whole lot more information that you could share with us in taking time to come to Jamaica Beach and letting us understand somewhat. I sure appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Second, when I first met you, I was like, you know, "Don't forget to Jamaica Beach. Don't forget us." You know, so many times we're overlooked. We're kind of the orphan out here. People forget that we're even here sometimes. And so I appreciate that you've always been aware of Jamaica Beach and you're not going to leave us out of this. We're not going to get skipped over, for instance.
Absolutely not. This, like I said, the beach and dune system goes from the end of the seawall down to San Luis Pass. You are absolutely a part of this. You're an essential part of this island. You're an essential part of this island's economy. And that dune system plays an important role for your protection and your local economy here on Jamaica Beach. So absolutely, you are definitely a part of the team, a part of the project, and I'm happy to come back anytime you would like for me to have a conversation.
Thank you so much, Sally.
Absolutely. Can I answer any other questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda, the city of Jamaica Beach has issued a proclamation claiming that the month of October, Melissa, will step forward. So it's a proclamation claiming that this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Jamaica Beach calls on all our citizens to support local efforts to prevent violence and assist victims of these crimes in finding the help and healing they need. So Melissa Hickey is one of our residents.
Joseph.
Melissa Joseph. Sorry. And she works with the Resource and Crisis Center here in Galveston, and they offer a lot of assistance and support to all victims of domestic violence. And they help with human trafficking and all kinds of issues related to those people that suffer in our community. So Jamaica Beach is very proud to offer you this.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to say a little bit about our Resource and Crisis Center.
Yes.
This is Terry Rizzo. I'm the Human Resources Manager for Resource and Crisis, or better known as RCC. And Terry Rizzo is a member of our Board of Directors. But as Mayor Bauer mentioned, we are a dual agency. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we do promote and help the well-being, safety, and protection of our clients. And we have a 24/7 shelter that we house also, but we also have residential and our shelter and non-residential services to support our clients and anyone that are victims trying to flee and start living a life free of fear. So just wanted to make sure I'm thankful for the partnership. RCC is thankful for the partnership with Jamaica Beach, and we have to start partnering more things to help support our agency. All right. Thank you.
Okay, next is the public comment section. We, Ms. Jones?
Well, the elections are coming up, and I just want everybody to know CSAT Church is going to be our election base. It starts the 25th, I think, or 24th, that Monday. And we'll have two weeks of early elections. The first week will be 5 to 8. The second week will be 7 to 7. And then we will be open in November for election day also. Everybody come out and vote.
So the first week, 5 to 8 in the evenings?
No, I'm sorry, 8 to 5.
Thank you. I was like, boy, that's different. All right. Thank you, Ginger. All right, next is our reports from... Yes, the announcements, sorry. First of all, there's a planning and zoning public hearing to be held the Thursday before the next council meeting on October 26th. And then National Night Out and our trunk-or-treat event. Make sure you get your golf carts ready and decorated and ready to give all our kiddos some treats on the 28th. And I know Chief Garavay has an awesome night planned for us. Follow the Facebook page and latest news on the website for those attendees and special guests that we have, that Garavay's getting scheduled for that event. Those will be coming out over the next week or two as we finalize that schedule. Reminder that AmeriWaste will not be providing recycling. We'll start again on the 20th. And then also a reminder that Veteran Appreciation is going to be Thursday, November 9th at City Council. Two years ago, we honored our World War II vets. This year, we'd like to honor our Korean vets. So I know we have a handful in the neighborhood. We'd appreciate everybody's help in bringing all those names of our vets forward so we can do something special for those Korean vets that served many years ago. And then also, I'd like to introduce our newest staff member. So as I think most of you heard, Jessica Sark has accepted a job with the Corps. She was previously employed in a federal position, so she wanted to continue towards her federal retirement and chose to accept the position with the Corps. And Bailey has stepped in to take over that position. So she started a week and a half ago. And, man, she's quick and fast, and y'all are really going to enjoy working with her on permits and other things as well. So, okay, next is the reports from our directors. And Chief Garavay?
Y'all weren't bashful when you were in class. Mayor and Council, this past Tuesday, we completed a five-week course, that includes you, ma'am. Our Citizens Police Academy, it was a five-week course, patrol procedures, use of force, self-defense tactics, Alderwoman Taz was karate chopping people. K-9, Galveston PD brought their awesome K-9s out the other night. And also, we had partnership with Alvin PD who brought their SWAT team out. It's just something we wanted our community to get a feel of what we do instead of what you see on the news and what you see on TV. They actually got to experience it, handcuffing felony traffic stops. It was a great class. We had 11, yeah, shoot, don't shoot, 11 people in the class. Some aren't here tonight. They had previous prior engagements. Terry Rizzo, Gina Rinnick, Alderwoman Taz Jones, Karen Anderson, Morcy Hoffman, Joan Waters, Charlie Karns, Nayoli Karns, Suzette Heard, Ms. Heard, police paid for her. She injured herself a couple of weeks back and wasn't able to finish. Sandy Dindby and Jerry Banner. Also want to thank Lieutenant Posey and Corporal Sarifan for doing an excellent job. Luckily, we give out certificates and things. Instead, we went a little bump and beyond and got you some awesome little plaques. They're going to hand them out to you guys now. Again, thank you so much for being part of the class. Congratulations to you all. It's a little token of our appreciation. We thank you for your support. We look forward to trying to do this possibly every other year maybe as we get more people in the community that want to get involved. Can we face that way real quick and take a picture?
Hey, can we take a second?
Sure.
Okay. Since it was such an amazing class, we learned so much about exactly what these guys go through every day. We got to do scenarios, and we were all literally nervous because these guys do an awesome job, and y'all, but it was an amazing class. So we wanted to present this to you. Bottom of my heart, we thank y'all so much for this.
We're very proud of y'all as well. Thank y'all for your support. Let's take a pretty picture. Thank y'all so much. Let's face that way. My wife's going to take a picture of us. We're short people, okay, Ms. Rizzo? I know what you're saying. Mayor and Council, y'all standing up back there?
Oh, yeah.
Again, congratulations to every single one of you. Also, I got one more announcement. These folks are mad at me because I praised them for it, but I had to at least say something. I promised I wouldn't say their names. We had three wonderful families that stepped up to meet with me to make a very kind donation to buy all seven of our full-time officers ballistic vests. They asked not to be named. That's fine. I still bought them a plaque whether they like it or not. I'm not going to name them. I just want publicly to let them know that we really appreciate the support for, and police, we call it going beyond the call of duty. Well, these citizens went beyond the call of duty to make this donation. So I publicly want to tell you guys, and a couple might be in the room, thank you very much for your support. Thank you for back in the blue. We can't do it without you. In the past, we've had to purchase our own vests. Officers buy their own, but this time, because of their generosity, we're all getting fitted this month, and we should all have our vests by mid-November. And we'll feel a lot safer being out here with vests that are not outdated. So again, publicly, I wanted to tell those three families, thank you so much, and the rest of you, one person.
How many vests actually cost?
It's 650 vests.
Yes.
Yes, and these folks stepped up to make sure all seven of us got a brand new one. So thank y'all very much. They know who they are. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Robert, do you have any highlights from your report you'd like to identify or talk about? Is it tax?
Is it tax? Sorry that we didn't come in the last month tonight. I apologize for that. One of the things that we're really, we were working on the recertification with Debbie Basic with Coomben Consulting for our insurance rates. That's coming up again. That's very important. And that's, we're starting to work on the dune crossovers, and we've always looked for the dune crossovers from the beach side. But the other day, Tom and I went out there to the dune side, and we actually found the old crossovers that are just covered with sand. So, yeah. Yeah. It was a eureka moment. So we're getting ready to start and looking for the art, putting out the art piece to build the sand dunes, I mean, the crossovers. And I'll take anybody for a walk over there if y'all wanted to see it.
I'll take you up a minute.
Be by a snake over there.
All right, thank you for submitting your report. Next is the update from our volunteer fire department, our fire chief, Hal Bay.
I always do like to start off kind of giving an overview of the department. I know we always have new people in the audience and new people in council that may not be aware of kind of what the department is made of. So the Jamaica Beach Volunteer Fire Department is a 100% volunteer fire department. They have no one that makes any money off of this. They're 100% volunteers. It's quite a tremendous effort that they put in to the city for this, not only in terms of making calls, but also in the time commitment they make to getting training and getting certified to do what they do. We also, as part of that, we do provide mutual aid to several of our partners. We provide mutual aid to Galveston Fire for structure fires on the west end, for any one alarm fires. For any second or third alarm fires, we'll provide mutual aid on the east end as well. When they have two alarm fires on the east end, we'll cover the entire west end for them. And for any, for that matter, any large mutual aid fires on the mainland, we'll go to those as well if they call us. For large burst fires, for large fires where they get into fourth and fifth alarms, we'll go to those as well. So we have a mutual aid compact with really the entire county at that point. We also have a mutual aid agreement through the Galveston Marine Response with Galveston Beach Patrol and Galveston Fire Department for responding. with Galveston Beach Patrol and Galveston Fire Department for responding water rescues pretty much throughout the entire island, but predominantly on the west end as well. We currently have thirty-four active volunteer firefighters on the department. We've got two prospects that have come to join us recently. We currently have two people that are in fire school. We have, one of our prospects is actually in the day academy, so that'll add a new one. If he comes on board, that'll be a fully qualified firefighter. One of our members has recently joined Galveston Fire Department, so we'll have a career firefighter that's joining, that's on our ranks as well. So she splits her time between both Galveston Fire and our fire department, so that's either in our cap. They obviously do like to have that training. So the nice thing about that is that we've gotten her ninety percent plus through her rookie book in record time, so we're very pleased with them. We are funded entirely by private donations and grants, and you'll hear a little bit more about the grant side of that in a little bit. We do have an ISO, that's Insurance Services Office, rating of three on a scale of one to ten, one being the best, ten being the worst, which does contribute to lower homeowner insurance premiums for the residents of Jamaica Beach. In our area, Houston is an ISO rating of one. That's the best you can get. The Insurance Services Office rates fire departments on their ability to respond to fires and how much damage they can contain. So a fire department with a one means that they've got the best response you can get out there. So the Insurance Services is gonna discount your homeowner's insurance because they can get there and give it the best shot they can give it. A three is on the end of very good. Galveston's a two. They recently got a two about the same time that we got our three. For volunteer fire department, a three is a really good number. A lot of the fire departments in our area are five or greater. A lot of volunteer fire departments are on the nine, ten end of the scale. What that means is that our average response time to calls is in the three-minute range within Jamaica Beach. Our average call is, you'll see when you get into the numbers that are in the packet, range in the ten-minute time. That's because of our mutual aid calls. When we go to Galveston, when we go to San Luis Pass, and you add those numbers in, it's a fifteen-minute drive to San Luis Pass. You add fifteen minutes into our three minutes, it averages out to about ten minutes. But within Jamaica Beach, we're usually on scene within three minutes. So that's a good number to have. That all factors into our highest level. For 2023, so through September, through the end of September, nothing in October has been factored into this. So for the first three quarters of the year, we've responded to 179 calls for service. Forty of those were mutual aid, automatic aid given. That means that's where we went and helped Galveston or Deep Beach Patrol. At the very highest level, nineteen of those calls were fires, 104 calls were rescue or emergency services, 18 calls were hazardous condition with no fire. That would be gas leak, sparking wires, line down, things like that. Nineteen calls were good intent or false alarms, fire alarm going off, no fire. Nineteen calls were service calls. That would be a left assist. That would be anything that we consider a service call. Somebody got locked out, got locked out of their car, and he doesn't forget him in a service call. If the same pattern for the last few years holds, we expect the last quarter of the year to bring in around twenty calls a month on average. So we're gonna be right back up to where our average calls are. As a comparison, full year of 2022, we responded to a total of 262 calls for service. So we're in the 250, 260 range for the last couple of years. Fifty-eight of those have been mutual aid. We're approaching that number. Twenty-four of those were fires. One was overpressure, rupture, explosion, overheating, no fire. Hundred sixty-seven calls were rescue or emergency medical service. Twenty-six calls were hazardous condition of fire. Twenty-one calls good intent, false alarm. Twenty-three calls were service calls, and one call was a special incident type. We responded to two structure fires in Jamaica Beach during this year. One was a fatality fire. We responded to five structure fires in Galveston as part of our automatic mutual aid agreement. We've also responded to three brush fires, one motor vehicle fire at San Luis Pass, and two recreational vehicle fires as mutual aid to Galveston as Texas can't grow. We've also performed three standby assignments covering the west end while Galveston was fighting two alarm fires on the east end. We've also responded to two motor vehicle accidents at the San Luis Pass to provide four by four assistance to expedite vehicles from the scene from the Galveston Fire Department. We've responded to eleven water rescue calls during the year as part of the Galveston Marine Response to Galveston. In addition, we responded to three EMS calls as mutual aid to Galveston. We don't receive mutual aid on fires. We also mutual aid in EMS calls when they're all tied up. And we responded to three motor vehicle accidents to assist Galveston when they had past casualty responses. Too many people to deal with, maybe additional resources. So for incidents, our volunteers have contributed 393.5 hours so far this year. And for training, 422 hours so far this year. That does not include the guys that went and gone to fire school. I won't count those hours in there because it's kind of totally separate. So that's just the time that they've spent through our system tracking through, tracking it down at the station. We're totaled 835 and a half hours of volunteer time contributed. It also does not include countless hours contributed to the fundraiser, or time spent working with the chili cook-off that we did for the RV park, or any of the other non-trackable work hours that our volunteers have done. We don't really have records for the department for Hurricane Ike. Those got destroyed during Hurricane Ike. But for 2009 and 2010 respectively, we showed a total of 100 calls for 2009 and 127 calls for 2010. So given the booming development on the west end of Galveston and the booming development in Jamaica Beach, if you look around and there's, there aren't a lot of spare lots left in Jamaica Beach, as well as the surge in beach tourism, we doubled our call volume since then. More than double. Almost double. So from a maintenance standpoint, in 2020, we were able to replace our 20-year-old pump on our works truck with a new pump motor. We were also able to have a complete overhaul done on our Sea Land's amphibious boat. This is well overdue because our boat's now approaching the 12, 13-year-old mark. And this was in addition to the routine maintenance we do every year on all of our vehicles. In 2021, we were able to get a loan through Moody Bank to replace our two used vehicles. In the past, we had a practice where we were getting some used vehicles through the fleet offices. There were rerun vehicles through the sheriff's office. That was not serving us well because by the time we got them, they were very tired and wore out. So what we found was we were putting a lot of money into them, trying to keep them up and running. So we went to Moody Bank, and they were gracious enough to loan us money to buy new ones. And so that has helped us tremendously in not having to pour out money in maintenance. And we were able to sell those older vehicles at auction. That allowed us to pay off a loan, a couple of other loans, and allowed us to purchase the used tower truck, which allowed us to decommission our old, 40-year-old ladder one, which was starting to really eat into our maintenance budget, trying to keep that. Aerials were special, and you have to do maintenance on those every year, and you have to get them certified every year. And that was really starting to eat into our maintenance fund every year. So luckily, we were able to find a vehicle in the area that met our requirements. It was in pretty good shape. Didn't require a lot of maintenance. And we were lucky enough to be able to afford a loan for that. We also got a lucky, we got a grant through Helping Hands. That's a Division of Texas Forestry Service that allowed us to replace our old air bottles, which were aging 2216 PSI air bottles with newer 4500 air bottles, which allows us to stay in the farms longer because of higher pressure. The Rosenberg Fire Department, they got the grant, were able to replace their air facts, so they donated their old ones to us, which was good because we came granted for that and was trimmed down for that. So that allowed us to replace ours. And we also participated in the usual parades and things that we normally do. And we had record attendance at our logic fundraiser. Grants is another story. We did apply, in 2020, we applied for a loose equipment grant from the Texas Forestry Service. And we thought they forgot about us, but in 2022, they came back and they said, you've got to go, you got your grant. And we'd quite forgotten we'd actually applied for it. Turned out for the better. So we did end up getting thermal imagers to replace one we had that wasn't working anymore. But with that, we were also able to get some personal thermal imaging cameras for each of our air facts, as well as we were able to get a skip unit for our UTV that allows us to pick our UTV up and play brush fires, as well as a few other, some helping lights and things like that. We, in 2022, we applied for the FEMA AFG grant, and we went in with BioVista and Bay Cliff on that. And I can explain more about that in a little bit, but we were turned down for that as well. We went in with them because they look at those grants on a per capita basis, and our size with the amount that we were looking to spend, it kind of prohibits us from getting the grant. But even with the number we put together, we still got denied. They also applied for a firehouse subs grant for an automated chest decompression device, and we got turned down for that. So we're still looking for grants. However, what we've learned through this process is that Jamaica Beach is kind of in a unique position. We're hard to get grant money for. Our income per capita is very high. Our average home price is high. Our average income per household is high. Our population demographics is not the national average. So we don't fit the mold of what they're looking for to give money to. Our 2020 population is 1,079, which I think is declining from what I saw. I think we're down to like 1,053, with an average household income of a little over 111,000, average home value of 249,000, which is 31% higher than the average for the state of Texas, and roughly 13% higher than the national average. So our median age is 56 and a half years, and our population is 83.25%. Why not miss that? Our 2020 poverty rate was 82%. So we're just not the demographic they're looking to give money to. The Texas Forest Service grants, we are lucky that we do continue to qualify for those, but they're cyclical. The way that they work is they give money to every department in the state, but they work through them from top to bottom. And now that I've got money, it'll be two or three years before I can get money again. So I just have to kind of wait till my name comes up again. And then when everybody else has got money, I'll get money again. But it's only limited to $20,000. AFG, you can get more money, but it's a 10% cost share, and it's the per capita thing. So it's, they're just very difficult to justify our expenditure for that. So that's kind of where we are. And then I've got a lot of charts and things that you can certainly look at. The biggest one, I think, could give you, like I said, on average, license cards, turn, average turnout time, dispatch and in route.
What page are you looking at? To what number?
It would be page eleven.
Thank you.
I think it showed our average for all calls were six minutes, and then turnout time, dispatch, in route is about two minutes. And average time on scene is about 40 minutes.
All right. Thank you, Tyron.
That's an excellent report.
They did an amazing job for us. Next on the agenda is consent agenda and approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
I'll second it.
All right. Are there any comments, discussion on the agendas posted? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting on 9/26, 9/28, 2023? All in favor? Okay. Robert, you getting any announcements there? Okay, next, your comments, reports for members of council?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, Chief Garavay pretty much said what I was going to say, but I wanted to again express what a wonderful job they did with this police academy and how much effort and time our police department put in for us. It was hard, and it was scary. And, you know, there were some really hard decisions that you had to make. They gave us a fake gun and said, okay, when do you feel you're gonna be, when do you feel you're gonna need to use it? If you were a police officer, at what point? I won't let you know that I failed. And had to really think about that. And it's pretty scary to have that 10-foot-tall Officer Siratant coming at you. But they knocked it out of the park, I can tell you that. So, Mayor, I do hope that we can do this again soon. We really did learn a whole lot, and I think more people will be interested. And I learned, I've always respected our police department, but I want you to know it gave me a real idea of what our police department does and the work that they do every day. Thank you, Mayor.
I'll have a report.
Okay. All to my members?
No.
Okay. All right. Next is our new business. And do I have a motion for discussion only on the proposed fee increases, the rate structure increases? The draft ordinance is attached. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make the motion to discuss.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I apologize, I lost my presentation. But basically, let me just second, I'll pull it up. As we've been talking to you guys, you're aware that we are underfunded from our rates on our bills. And in going through all the numbers, let me get this going. I hate not having a room. Nah, I can, it's faster to just go. Maybe so. No, I'm okay.
I can just grab mine?
Okay. Okay. Now I think we're ready to go. Okay, so basically, where it comes down Okay, so, basically, we're, comes down to talking about our sewer rates. Here's a summary of what our current charges are. Thirty-four, thirty-five for five thousand gallons, three twenty-five over that. When we look at what our costs are going to be moving forward, the portion of our contractor fee, that's branch construction that operates both our sewer and water systems, their portion that we charge to the sewer plant, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand. I mean, you can read, read the numbers, electricity, that's for both the lift stations and the sewer plant, basically the pumps and the blowers. Treatment expenses, that includes all the chlorine and the necessary chemicals we need. It's also for hauling off our sludge. You know, we concentrate the heavies at the plant, the water gets aerobically purified and then chlorinated and dumped in the bay, but there's a lot of leftovers. Those leftovers over time compact, and y'all have probably seen the, the trucks hauling it in and out. So we have to pay to have that sludge disposed of in a certified landfill. Then the overhead, that's the portion of City Hall and management of City Hall that goes towards the sewer plant. It's actually two sixty overall for sewer and water. We just split it between the two, but that has to do with the billing, managing the billing of the utilities, as well as just all the other support structures that are needed from City Hall. For looking at ongoing from a repair perspective, the lift stations, sorry, seventy thousand dollars. Our lift stations, we redone two of them, there's, the rest of them are in pretty bad shape. In fact, I was told yesterday that we have another one that's spewing a pipe and a broken check valve, and we were able to move from one pump to another and get by, but now we're in a, we're in a no-backup limp position, so we do have money budgeted this year, we'll just prioritize that lift station and get the piping redone and an extra pump put in. So, then ongoing repairs of fifty thousand, that's just for things that break, valves that, that have to be greased and worked on, as well as blowers that have to be replaced, pumps that have to be replaced, control boards that go out, all of that type of activity. And then looking long-term into the future, we need to be holding aside and reserve about seventy thousand a year to capital improvement. So, you know, over a ten-year period, we have seven hundred thousand in funded capital to do a major revamp if necessary of the plant. It's also just to replace things on a scheduled basis, rather than what we've been doing for the last couple of years, which is fix it when it breaks, in, in, rather than having scheduled dollars set aside and replacement planning for, for, planning for replacement on a scheduled basis. So, actually, when we look at the sewer, our total annual cost come up to five fifty. Our sewer revenue this past year was around five hundred and fifty-two thousand, so we're actually not proposing any increases to the sewer rates at this time. What you're being billed is, is covering what it takes to clean up all our messes. And then, but looking at water. So our water rate is twenty-eight seventy-five, yeah, twenty-eight seventy-five for five thousand gallons and five dollars per extra one thousand gallons. I spoke to city council several months ago, where we know that...
You have no corner.
Huh?
You have that corner.
We have no, I guess we need to...
You don't have any voting?
We don't have any...
You don't have any voting things, so you go with your presentation.
I know. If we had to vote on something, we would have...
There's so many different.
But we know that our rate being charged to us from Galveston runs about five twenty, five thirty for extra thousand gallons. So those of us that are heavy water users, the, the rest of the city has been supporting you in your water usage, because we actually don't even keep hold on that amount from what Galveston charges us. So, running through the numbers, the cost of waters is what we pay to Galveston, the portion of our contractor fees of three thousand. So I learned after budget that the majority, all of our meters are now outdated, their year, their life is ten years, all of our meters are past that age, several of them are critical. When our meters become critical, we have no real way of knowing they're critical, but they read low. So the, the little, the little flapper inside, it slows down, and when it slows down, it doesn't read all of the water going through. So, looking at, at meter updates, at least for the next ten years, we need to replace at least ten percent of our meters every year going forward, that comes to about forty thousand per year. Then, from an overhead perspective, once again, that's the cost it takes for us to oversee and manage and bill for water services. Then repairs on the ongoing basis, the water system, in a lot of ways, has a lot more failure rate than the sewer plant does. The number of valves in it, your hydrants, all of those need, need routine repairs, and this number will probably still be a little bit on the high side for the next four or five years until we get all the water lines replaced, but until then, we can anticipate really higher repairs than this. Last year, our repairs ran about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have trailed down a bit, we've not trailed down to this hundred thousand dollar amount, but we're working on more water projects as we go. So, in a way, this, this proposed increase is still a little on the low side. I really should have about a two hundred thousand dollar repair estimate in there, but, but we're being optimistic that, that we can drive costs down a little bit on that front. From a capital perspective, basically, if you talk to utility operators, their recommendation is that the life of your pipelines, if they were good PVC rated for the service, you can expect a fifty-year life, forty-five to fifty-year life on that. Looking at your valves and fire hydrants, they have about a fifteen-year life, especially in our environment. So when you estimate the cost of all of that existing infrastructure, and then you look at what you need to hold in reserve every year to keep your system current, we should be holding back about two hundred thousand dollars every year. If we were governed by the, by the Public Utility Commission of Texas, most states allow you about a six percent rate of return, actually. If you were to operate this as a business, that's a bit of a cushion in your operations. I'm not actually proposing that. So, when you, when you look at all the numbers, our total annual cost of nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, what that comes to is a forty-two dollars per two thousand gallons rate. That's a forty-six percent increase over what we've been paying. When you scale the same forty, forty-six percent increase from the five dollars per extra up, it comes to seven dollars and thirty cents per thousand gallons. So that is the proposal for the new water rate. I guess we'll break it out, and as we're in the habit of doing, opening it up to discussions. Does anybody have any questions, comments about these numbers? Yes, Ms. Jones?
Ginger Jones, one-six-six-one-two Curly. Looking at the average household, not with a pool and all that kind of stuff, the average one, about how much more will that raise our bill each month?
I'll show you that, I've got a final slide.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Where I, where I show you what that is, and, yeah, I'll...
I jumped ahead of you, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I didn't quite cover it that, that way, but, but because I've been running these numbers, I'll kind of tell you what it looks like when we get there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments, discussion on the proposed water rate? Okay, these don't really event you unless you're building a new home, or unless you don't know where your water valves are. So, currently, we've been losing money. We're charged twenty-five hundred dollars to put in a new water tap. We've been charging customers twenty-one forty-five. So we're proposing the city stay whole and, and charge people what it charges us, we're actually not making money on this, and going to that. The sewer tap, I have no idea why it was what it was. We've been charged a much higher amount of that for the past, believe me, I've seen every USW invoice for the past three years, as well as branches, and the number has continued to escalate, but it's, it's always been in the twenty-five hundred to three thousand range. And, and all of these prices are in line with what Galveston charges, so, anyway, we're just proposing charging, charging new home builders what it costs us to get the job done. We're proposing going up on our late payment from ten dollars to fifteen dollars, and then we currently, it's, it's in the ordinance, we're not changing it. If you have to have your water disconnected for any reason, and, and then you require us to come out on an emergency basis after hours to get your water back on for you, we're going to charge you an extra three hundred for that. This would be a rare instance where, you know, maybe you couldn't get your disconnect valve to shut off, and you had a leak or a plumbing exercise going on. And then, the other thing that's been brought to our attention is, I know y'all will all find this hard to believe, but many times when people leave, they, either the maid service or the individuals shut off water to their house, which is good practice. If you have a leak, you're not going to spew water and run everything inside. Well, they shut off the water at their valve, and then Cousin Joe shows up, or the next winter shows up, and they can't figure out how to turn the water on, and they call the city saying, my water's off. And branch construction very nicely sends someone out, and they check the water meter, and everything's working, and then they walk to the house and they go, and they charge us for that, because they've been called out, and sometimes called out from a distance. And, and so we are going to start passing that charge along to our users, our customers, our citizens. So I would ask all of you to make sure you know where your water valves are, and if you have guests coming, to make sure you can point them to how to turn water on to your house, or you're going to pay. So the proposed rate is seventy-five dollars for, and Robert, you'd like to help me with the numbers, seventy-five dollars if it's Monday through Friday during business hours. If it's Monday through Friday after hours, it's one fifty, and if it's a weekend call out, it's three hundred. So...
I'm just going to presume if the city turns your water off due to an emergency of some type, then you would not be charged?
No, no. This is if you require us to turn your water off for some type of home emergency, and then, I mean, if it's during regular working hours, and it's the meter, it's the valve and the meter, it's our valve that we're opening and closing, we'll be happy to come turn it back on. If it's, it's just if you call out after hours and it's an emergency and, and not a scheduled time. But this call-out fee, if we have to open your water valve to your house, your, your disconnect, your shut-off valve, to help you, to help a visitor or yourself or whoever locate it and turn it on, we are going to charge you in the future. Any questions about these fees?
We're not making any money on this.
Yeah, we're not making any, any money on this, this is just keeping the, we've been subsidizing a lot of activity over the last number of years. From a, Nathan, you're not ready. On, right now, if you so choose, you pay in your water bill a four-dollar donation to the volunteer fire department and one dollar to the EMS services that our fire department also provides. And as Kyle pointed out, they do an amazing job, costs are going up, funding, grants are going down, you know, and we still get to enjoy that insurance rating of, of three, which most volunteer units don't have, and we also get the privilege of having them right next door to us. So Nathan, who is president of the volunteer fire department, is going...
I think he said it all, I don't know much.
It's basically just here to answer questions, if, if any of you have, or do you want to go a little bit?
I'd say a few, a few things quickly, and then if there are questions. Sort of most stark in this is that that four-dollar and one-dollar donation on your water bill has remained at that price since it was instituted roughly nineteen eighty-eight. So we've operated the last, I'm not good at math, but that's a lot of years on that.
Twenty-five years.
As, as, as we've talked about already, prices for everything are increasing. You know, our, our operating budget, roughly a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, that water fee comes out to about a third of that. If it's increased, that will help, certainly. What do we spend that money on? Sort of the same things that you do, insurance, maintenance, we just happen to have big, expensive trucks to maintain, you know, tires, oil changes, anything that, that goes wrong with that. And I don't know if she's touched on it or not, but our call volume has essentially doubled in the last fifteen years, so we're doing more with, with what we've got. We do a really good job. But again, maintenance costs, insurance costs, we have to carry insurance on all our vehicles, property malpractice, workers' comp insurance, you know, those all come out of, of our budget. The, just quickly on the ISO and the command vehicles, which we secured, those have allowed us to drop that response time considerably, get on scene quickly, dropping those times, thus decreasing our ASO rating. So that's a sort of direct correlation of, we spend money, it benefits the citizens of Jamaica Beach. Eight hundred and thirty-five volunteer hours training and on scene, that's a month and some days of volunteer hours, that's pretty significant. And then again, cost of training is going up. Yeah, so, questions?
The other thing I know Kyle pointed out to me earlier, and Kyle, you can elaborate on it, is where EMS is concerned, there's so many new drugs and protocols that, that have to, that are required to be on their truck, on their persons, and, and those costs have gone up a lot in medical supplies that EMS is required to have.
Yeah, ten, ten years ago, I didn't have to carry nicotine on my drugs to counter fentanyl overdoses. But it has an expiration date, and when you don't use it, you still have to carry it, and then I have to turn it in, and then I have to go buy more. So it's not like I can go to the drug company and say, I just want this, and then when it's expired, give me more, and I have to buy more from them, and then when I can't legally use it, I have to turn it back into them, or what they do with it then is they go sell it to Mexico. They hit the salt points, I can only buy it, I can only buy the new stuff, and they go sell it to Mexico. It's, it's a good racket if you can get it, but I have to buy new every six months. But, so my, I have to buy enough, though, that I always have it, if it, you know, to have it available. The same with my epinephrine for heart attacks, or, you know, you know, any kind of allergic reactions and things like that, I may not need it, but I have to have it, and then when it's coming close to expiration, I have to order more of it. And it's to the point now where everything has an expiration date on it, even, even syringes, even masks and gloves and things like that, so I now am governed by the law of the expiration date, so you have, it's just a time ordering system that we have to live by, and everything is going up and up in price.
So I shall, I shall note, this is the voluntary donation, the city helps you donate money to the fire department and the EMS by collecting this as part of your bill, and then on a monthly basis, we send those collections over to the fire department and the EMS. At any time you want to increase this amount, which we have several residents that do that, decrease this amount or eliminate this amount, all you have to do is, is call Ms. Tina and... and, uh, and she'll be happy to adjust your bill. Um, this is, this is voluntary. It's just a convenient way for you as a grateful citizen to, uh, to, to donate in addition to the Fourth of July event. Um, so any other questions for Nathan?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll take a minute here to thank Nathan and, and Russell was also involved in, in helping put this together because he's our liaison for the fire department and the EMS and, uh, and coming up with some thought and care into what the recommendation is. Um, okay, so Ms. Jones, moving forward, uh, for a, the minimum bill, um, it comes to, it, uh, your bill had been eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Um, if you select to, to, to stay with our recommendation of what to volunteer for the fire department and EMS, uh, your new bill would be a hundred and one and thirty-five Um, Ms. Jones, to add to this, most, I, I would say our average consent, we actually have the majority, way the majority of our residents stay under the minimum. Um, when I say, yeah, our, the majority of our meters, uh, never go past the two thousand gallon mark. Um, and then when you look beyond that, it's probably, it's a pretty linear response on, on how much extra people pay, um, up to the maximum. So if you, if you look at five dollars up to seven dollars and thirty cents, if, if you're, uh, there's no such thing as average really in our neighborhood, but, but I would say for the average households, you can probably tack on an extra fifteen dollars to this bill based on average across the year overage. Now clearly this summer was a unique anomaly and we all saw fifty to hundred dollar increases in our water bill, uh, trying to keep our yarns alive. And of course you can ratio that extra amount by forty-six percent. And so across the board, you can look at it, just add forty-six percent. So if your average water bill was fifty dollars, you're gonna, when I don't, I don't mean the whole bill, I mean just the water portion of your bill, you'll see it go up to about seventy-five. So, um, that's, that's what we're looking at. And I, uh, I, I hate to be the one to come forward and, and, uh, propose increases, but we are, we are at a point where we, um, we have to, and we're actually required to run our municipal services as a business. So it, it has to be fee-based and we've not been doing that for the last several years, for the last several years. Our general property taxes and our other fees, court fees, et cetera, um, we've subsidized our, our municipal side for a while and, uh, and we're really not supposed to do that. So, um, any other questions? Do I have any discussion from the remaining council? No? Okay, so at the next meeting, um, we will have on the agenda for approval, um, the new rate structure. So that's all I have on new, oh, do I have to...
You have no vote.
Motion, huh, do we have no vote?
You have no vote.
So, um, okay, so I think we're on to the mayor's report. All right, so first of all, the search for the city administrator is progressing. Uh, as of Tuesday, I was informed, we have nine very qualified applicants. Um, the posting will close the first week in November. Uh, then they'll do some reviewing and calling and take that down to, uh, the top, uh, probably four candidates that they'll bring to talk to us about. Uh, from there, they'll bring those candidates in for an interview with city council and, um, and, and then we'll keep, we'll keep all the citizens apprised of who those candidates are and what they look like and, um, it's looking good so far though, to have a very qualified candidate. Um, I introduced Bailey. She is our new permit coordinator, as I mentioned, replacing Jessica Sark. And, uh, you know, we're going to miss Jessica, but Bailey just brings great computer skills, a great work ethic and a passion to improve. Uh, she and Jessica have already been searching out software programs to help streamline the permit and code enforcement process. Uh, they're just beaming with ideas. Um, they spent a bunch of time this week going over and making, uh, expanded cheat sheet on permits and what's required for each of them, um, so we can have more consistency in, in how we issue permits. And then also as we look at putting it into an online system, this would allow people who need a permit to actually go submit the permit online. Uh, and then with it, it would allow them to be able to track the progress, to see inspection status updates if inspections were required, to schedule inspections and, uh, and then we also don't have all that paper. Uh, right now we have lots of paper, then we scan it in and we manage it and we have boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes and boxes of all permits later on. So, um, you know, and then also Bailey is going to be taking over managing the registration process and the hot tax payment compliance for our STRs. Um, Tina is going to be taking over the park, um, oversight as well as the marina and the permitting for that. And, and then in this interim until, uh, pool season actually opens, Robert is going to be overseeing what needs to happen in the pool for the next six months. And then Tina's going to get to have the fun with day to day. And Tina is such a great energetic planner and promoter, uh, that when it's time to look at extra fundraising activities at the pool and how we can get more citizens involved and engaged at the pool, you're looking at the lady right now. Yeah, she's going great. I, I, I mentioned about our Korean vets, bring that name forward. A reminder, the trash ordinance is going into effect November first. And, uh, we will have an online form on the website. It's within the water and sewer department page. It'll allow you to submit an email with information about your neighbors that might be out of compliance that you think we need to check on. So, um, plus, uh, Tom Everett, our code enforcement officer, has been trailing the trash truck, um, for the last couple of days, um, putting his warning letters together to notify people that it's, it's time to get in shape, November first is around the corner. So I know, uh, I for one am hopeful and am looking forward to a more trash-free neighborhood. Uh, the next phase of the water line project is progressing. Uh, the drawings have been reviewed, uh, the bid proposal is being developed, uh, with a bid approval date targeted for early December and a construction start date in early January. Um, you know, with plans that we will be well complete with that next phase by, uh, the start of spring break. So the next phase of water projects is basically from the stop sign at Jolly Roger and, and Bob Smith to the bird sanctuary. So there's a section of Jolly Roger, um, and then the next four streets, y'all help me out, Cabesa de Vaca, Managua, Kingston, uh, that section in addition to Pelican Way. So, um, so that's the next phase. Um, as part of that phase, we decided to go ahead and pigtail, uh, tap connections to empty lots unless those empty lots are clearly, you know, like there's a pool in it, right? It's not really empty. Or, or if a house travels to lots. But if it, if it looks probable that that house, that the, the lot will be sold at some point and the house put on it, it costs us, um, you saw our water tap fee of twenty-five hundred dollars. If we do it as part of this project, it's probably about two fifty, three hundred dollars. And so then yes, the city will be making money, uh, when it's time to connect. But it also streamlines the process, keeps us from going under roads or tearing roads up. While it's messed up, let's go. So if you know that there's a lot that will never be developed, um, or you have some huge adverse reason to not wanting a water meter in your lot, um, you're welcome to come talk to us, but our plan is to put a water, just the pigtail, not a meter, just the pigtail going from the main up to the box and set the box. And we are going with those new waterproof lids. So we are, part of the money embedded in the meters and all that is to go through and we are slowly going to be replacing all of your floaters with lids that actually lock down and won't float away. And they also won't crack if you step on them or if your mower hits it in a certain angle. So, um, I know if y'all are like me, every high tide, we get to go around and, and try to play puzzle pieces with the floating meter lids. Okay, um, like I said, staff is looking at improving our internal efficiency. We might see a couple of hiccups in the next couple of months, but we're looking at migrating our water billing system from an online, from a, a desktop version to, we're looking at all going cloud-based or a, or a hosted online environment. So we'll be doing that with water. We're looking at the optimum solutions for court. And once again, I'd like to comment, I mean, court, the new judge, if, if y'all want to ever have, come see an entertaining moment, come to court on Friday morning.
Popcorn is served. Popcorn is served.
Popcorn is served. But, but, uh, but Jennifer is just doing an amazing job and our revenues off our court are, are through the roof. Uh, some of that is backlog, but it's also because I know sitting up here at city hall, uh, what is it, about every hour and a half, you hear the "yee, yee, yee." You look out, "Oh, Jacob got somebody, oh, Reggie got somebody." He's, he's very aggressive at, at keeping our streets safe, but it's also bringing in the city a lot of revenue.
Well, and there's also, I've sat through a few of these courts things and it's not just that, but they're finding people with glass on the beach.
Yes.
You know, there's, there's, um, there's other things too besides just catching the feeters.
I, I expect for a while our trash ordinance is going to bring us some revenue too. Uh, the website continues to improve. The old website has been shut down. So if you go to look for it, you're not going to find it. Um, the, all the old ordinances have been moved over to the new site. In the next few days, all of the old agenda and council meetings will be moved over to the new site. We are still working on MuniCode. Uh, we continue to learn more every day. Uh, and sometimes it feels like more questions than answers, but a lot of people have put in a lot of dedicated time, uh, getting our MuniCode is as good as it can be. I wish I could give you a target date. Uh, I still think we're looking at probably having, um, our comments sent to them in about thirty days and then they have a turnaround of thirty to forty-five days. So we're probably still looking at three to four months before the new MuniCode is actually up. And then all the old ordinances will just be archived, still in the website, but, but they're kind of buried and archived. So the cool thing about MuniCode is you go out and you can search. So if I want to see, do I have an ordinance on bulkheads? I type in bulkheads and it will go to every spot in our ordinances where bulkheads are mentioned. So, uh, instead of trying to read through two hundred old ordinances and figuring out where something might be buried, uh, we're working on it. So anyway, that's all I have. I hope everyone, uh, enjoys our wonderful little bit of break in the fall weather and of course the lovely mosquitoes that have come out. Okay. Do, do I have, I mean, we don't really have a, but we still think we have to...
Recede, recess.
Huh?
You recess. You can recess the, the meeting, if you have no vote to take.
To adjourn it?
To adjourn it.
Okay. We will recess the meeting.
Beating it for change.